Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the last Board of Commissioners meeting for the year of 2020. We will offer the opportunity to public comment. If there's any items not appearing on the agenda at this time, we would welcome you to offer five minutes of public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none, we will accept public comment as each item is under consideration. We will look for a motion now to approve the minutes from our December 17th Board of Commissioners meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from the December 17th Board of Commissioners meeting.
I will second that. It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. Moving into our COVID-19 planning and response section, I'd like to turn it over to Margaret Gray at this time for some introductions for some of our guests. And she's put a terrific program together, I guess you could speak, say, in terms of today for our final actions for 2020 when it comes to COVID-19. So I'll turn it over to Margaret. Good morning, Margaret.
Much. It's my pleasure this morning to introduce all of you to Tom Charles, the Executive Vice President for System Development, Chief Strategic Officer for Mountain and the Health System. Indeed, Mountain and the Health System throughout this year has been an important leader in helping us to navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic. In particular, Mountain and the Health System and its staff have helped us with guidance and consultation at critical points during the pandemic for which we are most appreciative. Tom, in particular, has been a great partner with us and has kept us informed every step of the way. And his information has helped us to inform our decision-making here in Center County. He has information to share with us today and an update on his perspectives and what Mountain and he is dealing with currently, and I'm going to turn it over to him at this point so that he can share that with all of us.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm just checking. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, okay, thank you. I would like to thank the Commissioners, thank Margaret for the opportunity to come and meet with you. I really have appreciated, you know, the open line of communication, the support that we've gotten from the county, your work in diligently promoting, you know, the things that we need to be thinking about and doing to the community. It's been greatly appreciated. I can't say often enough that as a community, we are all in this together. This is a collective effort. It's a collective impact, and you know, that can't be repeated often enough. So I really appreciate the opportunity to come and give you a quick update. I'm going to share my screen here, so I'll just make... So it looks like I'm not able to share my screen. It says that it's the... That functionality has been disabled, so maybe we could see if we could disable that. I'll just take a second here.
Let's try it again now.
Very good. All right. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So let me start out by saying, before I jump into the numbers here, the first thing I want to say is to recognize our team at Mountain and the Health. They are doing an incredible job under very, very challenging circumstances. And, you know, I am really here to talk on behalf of our team to recognize the excellent work that our frontline caregivers are doing, that our physicians are doing, that really the entire staff has been doing over the course of the last nine months. I mean, it's really, you know, hard to imagine and remember that we've been in this for an extended stretch of time. And, you know, we have not been in normal mode of operation for an extended period of time.
Thanks. Bye.
And our team has really been doing a phenomenal job, and so that's really how I want to start, by recognizing their excellent work. I'll just give you a short overview of how we have been trending at the county level, and this is really important, I think, to remind ourselves. This is the seven-day rolling average of new confirmed cases in Center County and how that pattern has changed going back to really the end of August, which is if you, if we can remember back that far, we were at very, very, very low daily case counts in Center County. And so we had gotten to the point where things were, you know, relatively modest in terms of the number of new cases that we were seeing. And then, you know, of course, in the beginning of September, things changed pretty dramatically, and we were up to an average of about 108 new cases per day and stayed at quite high levels all the way through the month of September. And then, most of the month of October, by the time we got later on in October, we were down considerably but still well above where we were at the end of August. And then you can see that this gradually worked its way back up until after Thanksgiving, where we reached the highest rolling, a seven-day rolling average that we've experienced, almost 120 at the end of November. And we've remained in a relatively, you know, high level of new cases from November into December. And we've seen a little bit of movement downward in the last couple of weeks, but again, orders of magnitude different now from where we were, you know, back at the end of August. The challenge that we've seen has been a, you know, significant bump in the number of cases post-Thanksgiving. And, you know, that has a fairly long period of time to run out. And we're fully expecting that we will see some kind of a post-Christmas and New Year's impact on this as well. So even though you could look at this and say the numbers are down from where they were, we're still not at a good place, I would say, overall as a county. We have very, very high rates of new cases. And as I get into in a little bit, the demography of this is such that it's really driving a significant change in the number of hospitalizations. So I'll say here, and I'm going to say all the way through this, this is ultimately a community solution. This requires all of us to manage our behavior and the things that we do in a way that mitigate the spread of the virus. I know that you have been delivering that message. That can't be said often enough unless we change things at the individual level, limit our gatherings, limit our interaction, mask, wash our hands. These numbers will not change to the degree that they need to change in order for there to be less pressure on the entire health system. So here's how this has translated to the number of hospitalizations. The blue bar is the number of new cases in a month, and the red line is the number of admissions to the hospital in that month. And so you can see that in the month of December, we have the highest number of cases that we've had at any point, you know, since we started to track this back in March. And by far, we've had the highest number of hospitalizations that we've had. You can see how dramatically the hospitalization picture has changed. In September, we had 2,200 new cases. So far, in the month of December, we have 2,300 cases. But the number of hospitalizations on about the same number of cases is dramatically different, more than tenfold increase in the number of hospitalizations. And so I'm going to get to the demography of this in a moment, but you can see how materially the picture has changed for the hospital over this period of time, even though the number of cases is not dramatically different. And this is how it translates in terms of average daily census. You know, in the month of September, we were averaging two COVID-positive patients in the hospital every day. Now, in December, we're up to almost 50 on average every day. So a dramatic change in circumstance, you know, for the impact on the healthcare system. This is how it looks day over day in terms of the number of COVID patients. This is a technicality, but I know there are a lot of numbers reported, and so I want to try to clear something up. The numbers that I'm showing you here are the number of COVID patients that are in-house at midnight every day. But that doesn't mean that this is the highest point that we've reached because as we go through the day, more people get admitted, people get discharged. And so at certain points during the day, our number in-house can actually be greater than what the number was at midnight. And so the highest single point that we've reached to date has been 74 patients. At one point during the day, in the past couple of weeks, we were at 74. And, you know, that is a huge impact on the hospital and our need to be able to manage all of those, all of those patients. So you can see how dramatically that's changed. We are fully expecting that we will run at relatively high census levels through the month of January. And, you know, we're just waiting to see what the post-holiday bump is here, you know, and hoping that the gathering behaviors, you know, were such that, you know, we're not going to see another spike here post the holidays. The average length of stay for patients in the hospital has come down from where it was back in the early stages of the pandemic. The average length of stay back in May was over a couple of weeks. And you can see that really since the summer, the average length of stay has been, you know, five to seven days. So that hasn't changed dramatically. Here's the demography of people who are being hospitalized for COVID. Eighty-seven percent of the individuals hospitalized for COVID are over the age of 50. This is 51 to 70. This is over the age of 70. Fully half of the individuals we've hospitalized are over the age of 70. And we've hospitalized over 500 individuals so far since we started tracking. I want to set one thing straight. The vast majority of these hospitalizations are individuals like most of us on this call. They are not individuals from long-term care facilities. They are not individuals from prisons. We've certainly had those individuals hospitalized, and I don't want to minimize that. Far and away, this is community members. One thing that I can't say often enough is everybody has to understand, this is not over there in a long-term care facility. It's not over there in a prison. It's not over there on campus. It's all those places, but it's in the community. That's where this is happening, and that's what's driving the hospitalizations, far and away. You can see the average age of hospitalized patients has been going up a little bit. And in the month of December, the average age of individuals hospitalized for COVID was 70. And then finally, I'll go to testing. And here's what's been happening with the testing numbers at Mountain and the Health. This is the number of individuals that we test on a weekly basis. And you can see that those numbers were, you know, up around 1,200. In the month of December, they've tailed off a little bit for a couple of reasons. We've cut back on our surgical procedures because of the need to, you know, manage the volume of COVID patients. So that's cut down on our pre-surgical testing. The university, you know, has cut back with going to online campus. That's reduced some of the testing that we're doing related to that. And then also, and I think certainly the presence of what's happened at the mall has been a great addition, you know, to the testing capacity in Center County. We obviously need to be testing a large number of individuals, given the amount of community spread. And then finally, and this is alarming, the positivity rates on the patients that we have been testing remain quite high. Normally, you would see positivity rates above 5% are cause for concern. Well, you can see that we are well, well beyond that. And some of the other testing data that we've seen from some of the other health systems in the county suggests the positivity rates are quite high. So, you know, that's just something to keep an eye on. So in summary, a couple of things. Our staff has been doing a great job. I would want the community to understand this is a collective effort. We all have to do our parts individually to make good decisions about how we're managing our own interaction for this to come under control. We are managing through this as all hospitals are having to manage through in the state of Pennsylvania. We are having to cut back on the number of services that we provide in order to deal with this dramatic growth in the number of COVID patients. We're hardly alone in that. Hospitals across the state are making those same decisions. And we hope we get, we don't get to the point where we have to cut things back further. But, you know, we'll make those decisions, you know, based on what we have to do going forward. And the best thing anybody can do for us is to manage their own interaction in a way that limits the spread of the virus and allows these numbers to begin coming back down to a level that is really more manageable for the community. So those are my comments. I would, I will stop sharing my screen, and I would be happy to respond to any questions.
Tom, thank you so much for the opportunity to, for your time today and the opportunity for us to dialogue with you a little bit. You know, I think it's, it doesn't, at this point in time, we're nine months into the pandemic. It doesn't make sense to mince words. One of the things you didn't share was the fatalities based upon COVID-19. And if you're willing to talk a little bit about that and the trends that you're seeing, I think that's important. I also think, from a health system standpoint, that obviously you're going to see deaths occurring in a hospital. You're, that's part of what it means to be in the medical field. People understand that. But the magnitude, the fragility of this, the impact of what that's been and just how... Because it also comes with families not being able to come in and see their loved ones. Comes in with a lot of other, lot of other things. And so if you, if you might be able to speak to that as well for a moment, I would be very appreciative.
Well, thank you, Mike. And I think maybe the best way to speak to it is not perhaps to recite a bunch of numbers. I think you hit the nail on the head. There's a real human impact to this. And, you know, because of the need to manage infection control and all of those other things, the limitations on people being able to visit with their family members, to be present with them, you know, in situations that are very challenging and very difficult, you know, that, that takes a... There's a human impact on that, and that can't be lost on people. You know, the death toll that we've had in Center County has certainly been going up. We have seen, you know, the number of individuals in long-term care facilities or in our own facility that are passing away is distressing. But, I mean, it is a consequence of what we're going through. And I think we just can't lose sight of the human impact that this is having. Beyond the mortality piece of it, though, people who are living with longer-term symptoms, whose recovery periods are not quick, you know, there's a real consequence to that as well. And, you know, I would hope there is nobody at this point who doesn't see this as real, who doesn't see this as serious, who doesn't see this as something that really, you know, nobody wants to catch. I think that's a really important message to drive home, Mike.
Good, Tom. Commissioner Higgins here.
Yep.
First, I do want to remind people from a number standpoint, I believe the hospital is licensed for something in the ballpark of 250, 260 beds.
Right.
Some of those beds are pediatric. Some of those beds are for mental health services. So it's like all 260 beds would be available for suffering from COVID. Plus, there's just a certain number of patients you're going to have due to car accidents and heart attacks and stroke. And the hospital needs to be able to take care of those individuals quickly as well. One concern I have that maybe the county can help with a little bit, with multiple dozens of COVID patients in the hospital every day, you must be going through personal protective equipment very quickly. Are you receiving enough supplies from the state and federal government?
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Mark. We are fortunate in the steps that we've taken and the things that we've done to procure PPE, that we are in a good position with that right now. I mean, obviously, we've been thoughtful about the way that that's been utilized. But, you know, right now, we've been successful in managing our way through this. We've planned quite a bit, you know, in anticipation of a surge. Obviously, the longer this goes on, you know, the more we have to manage that supply chain. But, but right now, we are in a, in a good position relative to our supply of personal protective equipment. But thank you for asking.
That's good. If you, if you do need any help over the short term for a supply bump or two, please get ahold of Margaret or Jeff in our emergency communications, emergency services. We're happy.
Thank, thank you very much, Mark. That's greatly appreciated.
Tom, this is Steve Dershowitz. How you doing this morning?
Good, Steve. How are you?
I'm doing well. Well, first, I want to thank you and all the caregivers and service providers in your organization. I know these are stressful times, and certainly you're being tested probably like you've never been tested before. You know, these are, these are exercises I'm sure you've rehearsed for in the past, but now you're actually having to see them in real time. And that's, and we really appreciate the fact that, that you are, you are being tested right now. And so whatever we can do to aid you in that, I would certainly tell you that I think that's, that's the case right now. That being said, and all the other, all the other comments being made, one of the things that I'm getting a lot of questions on, and I think there's a lot of questions in the community, what, as far as the vaccination process, what's it look like moving forward for Mountain and the and the other medical providers in the community? What can we expect or what can we do to help you in regard to that process?
Well, Steve, first of all, thank you for the very kind comments. And I would just say, you know, again, to the Commissioners and to the county, thank you for all of the open communication, and thank you for all of the support. This really has felt like a partnership, and so we appreciate that. To vaccines, yes, that's the hot topic. And so, you know, you're probably all aware that we've received two shipments to this point. This is all being coordinated through the State Department of Health, which is coordinating with the federal government. And so the information that we get, we get from the State Department of Health. What we know at this point is that we have received one shipment of the Pfizer vaccine. We've received one shipment of the Moderna vaccine, and I think those have been, you know, well-reported in the, in the media. We are expecting to get equivalent shipments for both of those vaccines for the second round of vaccination. So that's the next step, is that we actually get vaccines and then to complete the second round, which we expect that we're going to hear. Beyond that, at this point, we literally don't know anything. You know, we are dependent on what the Department of Health tells us regarding future shipments and whether that's Pfizer or whether that's Moderna. At this point, we really don't know, to be completely truthful about it. We have put information on our website that basically says to the community, we will keep the community posted as we get additional information about subsequent shipments and who those are targeted to be delivered to. We are operating under guidance from the Department of Health and the Center for Disease Control that prioritizes the administration of these vaccines to particular priority groups. And so we are trying to adhere to the intent of that direction, obviously knowing that a lot of people are eager and anxious, you know, to get those vaccines. We've had a good adoption of the vaccine within our own staff. We've seen, you know, little to no side effects from the administration of the vaccine, these first couple of batches that we've done. So, you know, we're very encouraged about that. And at this point, short answer is, we are sitting tight and waiting to hear more from the Department of Health as to what we might get and when we might get it and what we might be able to do with that. So that's a bit of a long answer, Steve, but hopefully it addresses your question. I'd be happy to speak to that more if you have any further questions about it.
No, that's fine. Actually, not, not having any more information is legit. I think, I think that's helpful, though, as we move forward, that, you know, we, there's... I guess we, we don't know what we don't know yet, and I'm sure you're, you will keep us informed. And if there's anything we can do to help you facilitate the process, again, let us know because I think that's the next phase to kind of seeing daylight at the end of this tunnel.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just say two more quick things about that. It is a piece of good news. It's very good news. I also want to reinforce that despite the presence of the vaccine, and it's going to take obviously an extended period of time for a vaccine to make its way out into the general public, it does not change the need for us to do what we have to do every day. Those behaviors that are impacting the spread of the virus, managing those is not going to go away anytime soon, despite the fact that we're getting good news with the vaccine. And so I can't lose sight of that.
Thank you very much. And again, I'd give our best to, to all your, all your staff for, for the tireless work they're doing to keep us all healthy and safe.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Yes, Tom, I'd like to amplify Steve's comments. Your staff are heroes at this point to go into work every day, especially in the COVID wards, knowing you're going to be exposed to a deadly virus for eight, 10, 12 hours at a pop. We really appreciate everything they're doing.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Okay. Well, Tom, we appreciate the presentation, and I think our attention turns to the, as you said, the, the post-Christmas gathering increase. And as you showed in that one slide, the Thanksgiving gathering cases that we saw or the cases that may have been generated over Thanksgiving, those cases and the hospitalizations that trailed took about two weeks, intended, you know, two weeks to come. And so it's, it's going to take some time before we see if that came to fruition or not. So we hope it doesn't, but we wish you the best going into that phase. And as we get into the new year, of course, continued prayers and support in any way that we can as a community.
Mike, thank you very much. I am delighted to come and do this for you at any point that it would be helpful. So please don't hesitate to ask. You know, we're really here as a community resource, and, you know, whatever we can do to keep you informed and updated, we're happy to do it.
Okay. Well, Tom, thank you again. We appreciate again your time here today, and thank you again for the presentation.
Okay. Thanks very much. Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Thank you. So staying with our COVID-19 discussions today, we are going to, going to be considering a consideration of our extension for our county protocols related to our remote work status. And so we will turn it back to Administrator Gray.
Thanks very much. Our current county protocols indicate that we are on full work-remote status until Monday, January 4th. And given the data that was just presented and the travel that has taken place over the Christmas and what we anticipate to be this New Year's holiday traffic, I am recommending for your consideration that we consider to stay on this remote work status until the end of January, Friday, January 29th. That would get us through what would be the 10 days, two weeks period after a holiday where we think that there will be the most potential for community spread, and then reevaluate in that last week of January because we'll know by then what that spike, if there's a spike, what that spike looks like, and we can act accordingly at that point. It may be that that could be potentially our last spike in this. And with the confluence, so to speak, of the vaccines starting to be administered throughout our healthcare workers, our emergency responders, and others in the county, it may be that we, at that point, finally start to see a downward trend that continues to a point where we are back to some semblance of order. But I think the next two weeks in particular are critical. We have experienced, within our own workforce, more individuals on quarantine due to exposure. And I think this is the time to not let up on our, our protocols. So the recommendation for your discussion and consideration is to extend the full... I can't say that, say, full remote work status until Friday, January 29th.
Thank you, Margaret. And with the Governor's announcement yesterday of the easing of some of the restrictions, he did not opt to ease the restriction of telework. And his, the phrasing in the, in the updated order is telework until impossible. And we are currently, with many of the people who are doing telework and remote work, and we, it is still possible for us to do that. So I would support this and often look for my colleagues as well to get their thoughts on whether we continue this or not.
Based on the presentation from just a couple of minutes ago, it seems prudent to continue remote work for county staff through the end of the month, protecting our staff and protecting Center County citizens. I mean, if somebody absolutely, positively has to do something in person, you know, we have ways to make that happen. But as the Governor's mentioning, telework until it's pretty much impossible.
My, my only thought is, I would, I would hardly recommend that we look at it every two weeks rather than go a month at a time. You know, we can, we can, we meet weekly. We meet several times a week. And I think it's an opportunity for us to review the situation. And I think a two-week schedule would be much more preferable to me.
I think what we could do is take it to the end of January, but say that we could always, we could, we could, we could review it every week. I mean, we could literally just review it every week. And if there's a noticeable downturn, scale that date back. But I think extending it to the 29th just gives everybody the opportunity to know that's, that's where we're at right now. It could come back, but at this point, we're there. But yeah, I think every week we could be looking at this and seeing, seeing what the increases look like or the decreases. I'm absolutely fine with that.
Yeah, for, for purposes, let's just go to the end of the month, but I agree. We can take a review weekly.
Okay. All right. Margaret, thank you for that recommendation. We are in support of it. And we will, we will continue in that, in that posture for the month of January.
I would add that that would also include our Tuesday Board of Commissioners meeting staying remote at this point. Correct?
Yes. Yes, it would. Yes, it would. Yes.
Just wanted to be clear about that for, for seeing that. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Going into our personnel items today, we have two items for our CYS office. We have the consideration of the approval of the appointment of Lee Ramos Delgado as a full-time caseworker too.
Uh, we also have the consideration of the approval of the personnel requisition for a full-time caseworker two in the CYS office. Is there a motion to approve both of those items?
Motion to approve the two items for the Children and Youth Department.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Uh, for our Human Resources Office, uh, Kristen, we would turn it over to you if there's anything you'd like to add for this item.
This was um one of my floaters that we hired back in the um summer that we then utilized in the elections office um as one of your temporary workers. Um, we now would like to transition her back to a floater so that we still have her to use around the county as needed.
Okay, thank you, sounds good. Would we have a motion then for the transfer change in title?
Sure, um, motion to approve the transfer change in title for Justine Klein from a temporary satellite voting center worker to office floater.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you, Kristen. We have a report on the personnel item for the courts. The President Judge Pam West has approved the personnel requisition for full-time Department of Clark II in the probation office. Uh, we have a non-personnel item today for the Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Office. And this is a grant agreement with SAMSA through the US Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, and uh, we know that Natalie uh, uh, Corman is unable to be with us today. Uh, Margaret, is there anything you'd like to add to this or expand, expand the pond?
I would just add that this is great news. The uh SAMSA grant was just, as you know, you just approved the submission of the grant uh maybe ten days ago or so. We did not expect to hear quite this quickly. So it is excellent news to uh hear that Center County has been awarded this grant uh for technical assistance for January uh twenty-twenty-one through September of twenty-twenty-one. This dovetails with our uh, with the recommendations of the Mental Health Task Force. And we're really looking forward to getting started on this. Natalie can speak uh to more of the implementation details at a future meeting, but this is great news for us.
Fantastic, fantastic. And um, yeah, we do look forward to uh hearing from Natalie at a future meeting. Uh, but we do know that since this is due, the signature or the documents are due by the fifth, it would be a little bit tight to get this uh approved on the fifth and then the documents over. So if we take care of it today, we can get it through and then at a later date, we can highlight it. So thank you, Margaret. Okay, any other questions, comments, feedback on this before we look for a motion to approve? None? Okay, we look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the grant agreement with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration.
Second that.
It has been moved and seconded, any final discussion on this, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried, okay, thank you, Margaret. Uh, we have no discussion items listed and uh, do we have an executive session we would need to report, Margaret?
No executive sessions to report.
Okay, do we have a need for an executive session?
We do not.
Okay, fantastic, okay. Uh, questions from the, the press and media, we would welcome them at this point if there were any questions. Okay, hearing no questions, we will look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting at ten-thirty-five.
Second. All those in favor of adjourning say aye, aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried, we are adjourned. We will pause the recording here and then go into our Salary Board.